Alright, it is 5:30 according to the clock on the Zoom here. Welcome everyone to the Board of Education, our meeting. And we are going to call this meeting to order. And 1.2, our Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, it will be led by Mrs. Rogers. Second grade class from Dorothy Ingram Elementary School. Alright, great job. Great instructions, we appreciate you. And hopefully, some of you all were watching. We're now moving to 1.3, Approval of the Agenda. So move.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second. Is there, at this time, Dr. Volkermer?
Yes, President Rogers, we'd like to pull item 11.9. We'll be bringing that back in the future.
Alright, we're pulling 11.9. If there's nothing else, we will go ahead and take the vote. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Okay, he's on. Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, I motion carry. Thank you so much. We are now moving to 1.4, Inspirational Message. And I get the honors and the privilege of doing the message. And I want to start out by saying, we have come a long way. We've had a lot of things going on in the district. But in particular, I had the opportunity this weekend to reflect on the anniversary of March 13, 2020, which we all remember that day as we began to talk about something that was called flattening the curve. So my inspiration is of thankfulness and of acknowledgement of that day. But I even took it a little further. I thought about, it's been 300, I believe, in 68 days, which is 8,832 hours, which is 52 weeks, 3 days, 23 hours, 59 minutes, 59 seconds, or 529,929 minutes. And I'm not good in math, so you can check that. But as I thought about that day, I remember where we came together in what we would call the Situation Room. That is actually our 777 F Street, also known as our Board of Education, to make a very important decision. With no roadmap, with no manual, with no playbook, not even having these numbers put together of 25, 12, 16, 12, 5, 5, 9. Someone may wonder what that is. 84 years of board experience and service together, we made that decision. I remember personally that I had to drive to LA and schedule flights to bring my own children home. And so as we mark the one-year anniversary of the state's stay-at-home order, we should pause and reflect also on the amazing things we were able to accomplish by remaining flexible and true to our mission, which is making hope happen. And there's a video I'd like to share with you tonight.
2020 will be remembered as the year that forever changed education. From memorable drive-through high school graduations for the class of 2020 to enduring an entire school year in distance learning, San Bernardino City Unified School District's students and staff met the challenges brought on by the coronavirus head-on. Here's a look back at some of the milestones that made this year one for the books. As we look forward to a new year, SBCUSD remains committed to strengthening its distance learning program while continuing to prepare for the eventual reopening of our schools. Thank you for being an important part of our family of learners. We can't wait to see what 2021 has in store for us.
Awesome, thank you. So as you can see, a lot has happened. I'm grateful today for the decision that we made to ensure the safety of all of those that we so much care for, saving the lives of many and as well as our loved ones. So I just want to say this, if I had to do it all again with this Board of Education, I would do so gladly. So to the students and the families, continue to thrive. And let's all continue to acknowledge those that have lost their lives to this thing that we call COVID-19. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you a million times over. I couldn't be more proud to serve as the Board of Education President during this critical time. And yes, we will continue to get through this together. Thank you tonight for allowing me to do this inspiration. And to be continuously inspired. Dr. Volkermer, it is my understanding that we have some new on-boarders.
We do, President Rogers, thank you very much. Board, as you know, when you become an administrator or you choose, or you switch positions as an administrator, we have an extensive onboarding program. Part of that includes attendance at a board meeting. So we want to welcome the following people who are going through their onboarding program. Teresa Hopkins, who is the new principal at Alessandro Elementary School. Mario Haquez, Assistant Director, Student Wellness and Support Services. Trudy McCarter, Nutrition, excuse me, Nutrition Services Financial Supervisor. Vincent Warsaw, Vice Principal, San Gregorio High School. And Cynthia Zavala, Principal, Roosevelt Elementary School. Let's give them a big round of applause and welcome them.
Thank you, Dr. Volkermer, and congratulations to all of you. And we look forward to seeing you soon. Moving now to 2.0, 2.1 Resolution in Recognition of Adult Education Week. Dr. Hill, would you be so kind to read that tonight? Sure, thank you. Whereas... No, let me make sure I have the right, hold on just a minute. Whereas the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District acknowledges the contributions and vital role the Inland Career Education Center, ICEC, and many of us know as Adult Education, plays in the development of a well-educated and skilled workforce. And whereas ICEC provides educational support to those completing their high school equivalency requirements and individuals seeking career change, changes, or skill development through career and technical training. Whereas the Board joins others in California in recognizing April 12 through 16, 2021, as Adult Education Week. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino City Unified School District joins others in the state in recognizing April 12 through 16, 2021, as Adult Education Week. So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, if there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, I motion carry, thank you. Moving to 2.2, Resolution in Support of California High School Voter Education Weeks. And Ms. Rosales Medina, if you would read that resolution? I thought I...
Yes, I would, I would love to, thank you so much. So this is Resolution in Support of California High School Voter Education Week. Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental underpinning of democracy, one that must be personally cherished, practiced, and championed by civic duty, as a civic duty. And whereas young people play a critical role in our democracy by helping to choose the people who will lead us and by voting their opinions on the issues that are most important to them. And whereas California has an online tool that allows eligible 16- and 17-year-olds to pre-register to vote and then automatically become active voters once they turn 18. And by reaching out early and often to students, we can help them develop a strong and lasting appreciation for the value of voting. And whereas California Education Code designates the last two full weeks in April to be High School Voter Education Weeks, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the San Bernardino Unified School District declares April 19 through the 30th, 2021, as High School Voter Education Weeks and encourages district schools to participate in activities to help register and pre-register eligible students to vote, while encouraging others to become informed citizens committed to being active voters once they reach voting age. So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, if there's no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, I motion carry, thank you. Alright, we're now moving to 3.0, Closed Session. Ms. Cunningham, is there any comments?
Yes, ma'am, there is. Ashley Biedisakala has a comment.
Okay, we are ready.
Good evening, Board members, Dr. Volkermer and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Biedisakala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. For more than 20 years, San Bernardino City Unified School District has had a working model that has been unique amongst our peers. The relationship between the Board, management, and the employee groups, particularly SBTA, is unparalleled. We have instituted programs and policies with great success, like peer assistance and review, shared decision-making, co-op, community engagement plan, and others to make hope happen for the students in our district. Our shared values and deep caring and concern for our students and each other make our district a great place to work and go to school. We also know that when we work together, we improve our results and continue to build an educational environment that is safe and effective. Even when we disagree, we find common ground and are kind to each other. We want to continue to grow as a district and spend our time and effort on moving forward as we come out of this historical pandemic, rather than being sidetracked by issues of divisiveness. Tonight, you have a decision to make that will chart our future. We hope that you will consider the track record of any potential candidate. What have their working relationships been like in the past? Are there red flags in the media or other online posts? Does their experience coincide with the collaborative environment we have in our district? We hope our next superintendent reflects our community. We believe our next superintendent should be one who builds bridges between parents, students, and staff, and not one who will tear asunder the fabric of the mutually collaborative and positive work environment we have built over the last 20 years. They should believe in transparency and cooperation. The voices of parents, students, and staff must be valued, even when unpopular. They need to be innovative, creative, and willing to help us grow without instilling fear. A leader who brings stakeholders together to make change, rather than mandating change, because we know that real progress only happens when we do it together and when all stakeholders have ownership of the process and result. We would like to acknowledge and appreciate the leadership of Dr. Volkermer as interim superintendent over this past year. It is another way that our district is leading the way. We have worked together side by side to face the extreme challenges of this past year. No one could have known when we left school on March 13, 2020, what was in store. But we have persevered, and that is in no small part due to his leadership, the Board's commitment, and our incredible members. So perhaps we need more time to find the perfect fit for us, someone who can build with us for the future. We are not broken. We are not, we are imperfect for sure. But we are a district that focuses on its growth and possibilities and one who has limitless potential. We want to get this right. It is too important to our future. I know this process is not easy and that you each feel the weight of this decision. It is what makes you the best board team in the state. It is a time of opportunity and challenge. But that has always been when we have done our best work. So I ask you, please reflect upon our legacy as a school district, one that is inclusive, collaborative, and works together as a really big family as you select a new superintendent for our district. Thank you for taking the time to listen tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Biedisakala, thank you. Is there, is that, you just said one, Karen, correct?
Yes, correct, that was it.
Okay, alright, so at this time, we're now at 3.0. We're going to 3.2, I'm sorry, we're going to adjourn to closed session. So thank you, we will see you all, our viewing audience, as soon as possible. We are now adjourned, Board members, log out and we'll log into our closed session. Alright, um, thank you again. We are now returning from our closed session. We appreciate your patience and your time. And we're going to move right into 4.1, Assistant Director, Special Education Human Resources. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee. Ryan Rubio, Assistant Director, Special Education, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And if there are no questions, I'm always going in order, I'm trying to see where I am. I flipped my page, so you guys don't get... Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Abios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, I motion carry. We are now at 4.2, Middle School Vice Principal. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following employee. Kathy Atencio, Middle School Vice Principal, Rodriguez Prep Academy, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
So move.
Second.
Alright, it's been moved in second, if there's no discussion. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, I motion carry, thank you. 4.3 Superintendent. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following. Harry Doc Irvin Superintendent, effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Hill? Aye. Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Mr. Tillman?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, I motion carry. Thank you all and congratulations to all of the appointments tonight. We are now going to...
President Rogers. I'm sorry to interrupt President Rogers, but we do have Mr. Irvin here. He logged on with us and just wanted to make a quick comment. He's right there on the Brady Bunch screen.
Oh, Mr. VP, that's what you were talking about, you shouldn't have told me.
I was trying to tell you without saying anything else.
Okay.
Keep a wink, but you didn't catch it.
Okay, go ahead and come off of the camera, because I can't see.
He's there already, we can see him.
Okay, is he, is he, is he going to say something?
Yes, I'm here. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Listen, I'll be, I'll be quick because I know that you have a long agenda. But I'll say first and foremost, I'm excited to accept the position of Superintendent of the San Bernardino City Unified School District. As, you know, this is a great opportunity to further impact students in K-12 education. I've dedicated nearly three years to making decisions in the best interest of children. And I will continue to do that in my new role. So I want to thank the Board of Education, you know, for their confidence in me. And I look forward to working collaboratively with the San Bernardino education community. So thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, and I'll let you get on to the work. Thank you.
Congratulations again to you, and thank you for zooming in so late.
Madam President, Madam President. Doc, Doc, you still on?
Yes, ma'am.
Favor de decir algo en español, por favor.
Oh, sí, a la comunidad que mira, yo tengo muchos ganas para trabajar por, por la comunidad de, de San Bernardino. Y, y yo creo que yo espero que en el futuro yo puedo trabajar juntos con ellos. Y, y muchas gracias a la mesa de la directiva por, por ese oportunidad. So muchas gracias, and I look forward to working for the community. And so gracias y, y muchas gracias a todo de la comunidad. Thank you so much, especially to the Board.
Thank you again, and have a great night, because we got a long way to go. Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Wyatt. Okay, now we are at 5.1, District's Initial Contract Proposal Successor to the Communications Workers of America.
Madam President?
I'm sorry?
Just point of order. I know people are probably on there for public comments at 7 o'clock.
Oh, you're right, thank you so much. I, you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Tillman. Let me move back to the public comment or move, yeah. Let me pause and move to public comments, if you all don't mind, because we do have people that have been waiting. So Ms. Cunningham, if you have our comments, our public on, please, we would like to bring them up right now, thank you for that.
Okay, let's see what we got here. The first one I'm going to call is Mrs. Husband. If you're available, could you please unmute? Okay, I was told she left the meeting. Okay, the next one I will call is Alfredo Aguero. If you're available, would you please unmute?
Escucha.
Yes, we can, we can hear you.
I'm going to make my comments in Spanish, and I'm going to use a translator.
Yeah, I'm going to be translating. And I will ask you to please, Mr. Alfredo, speak in short sentences, so I will be able to capture everything and I will be able to do a good interpretation, okay?
Bueno. Gracias. Buenas noches a todos.
Good night to everyone.
Mi nombre es Alfredo Aguero, y soy organizador, organizador en la área de educación especial.
My name is Alfredo Aguero, and I am the organizer in the area of special education.
Primeramente quiero felicitar a los nuevos miembros de la mesa directiva y a los miembros que fueron reelegidos y al nuevo superintendent Doc Irvin.
First of all, I want to congratulate all the ones that have been given a new position and reelected, especially to Superintendent Doc Irvin.
En otras ocasiones, he comentado por qué se gasta tanto dinero en encontrar, en contratar firmas de abogados.
I have asked in other meetings, why we spend so much money to contract with lawyers.
Y esto para hacer usados, para estar en contra de los servicios que los estudiantes de educación especial necesitan.
And to be used against the services that the special education students need.
Necesitamos más educación, menos litigios. More education, less litigation. Creemos que el dinero que se gasta en abogados serviría más para ayudar a los estudiantes de educación especial.
We feel that the money that is spent to hire lawyers will be better used for the special education students.
También quiero pedir a ustedes que nos ayuden para que el CAC trabaje más para educar a los padres con hijos en necesidades especiales.
And we also want to ask you to please help us have the CAC work more with the parents that have students with special educational needs.
Que se den talleres para que ellos aprendan cómo abogar por sus propios hijos.
That there will be workshops so they can learn how to advocate for their own kids.
También, también quiero mencionar
Also I want to mention
Que algunos de ustedes que asistieron a la última reunión del CAC se pudieron dar cuenta que se están avanzando en cómo llevar a cabo estas reuniones.
And I know that some of you that have participated in the CAC meetings have noticed that they learn how to carry on with these meetings.
Solo es necesario que, que los estatutos sean respetados.
We just need that the bylaws need to be respected.
Pues los administradores los usan solo cuando les conviene.
Because the administrators use it only when it's for their convenience.
Ya comenté algo a la señora Sebals sobre que los votaciones de los oficiales debe ser escalonada.
I already commented, Mrs. Sebals, that the votes should be in different levels.
Así, así lo dicen los estatutos en el capítulo 3, en la sección 4.
It said so in the bylaws in chapter 3, in chapter 3, verse 4.
Por favor quisiera pedirles que, que si es posible poner este, los subtítulos en español.
And also would like to ask if you can put the subtitles in Spanish, please.
Nuestra comunidad necesita ser informada y creo que ya es tiempo de que se haga algo por parte de, de, de los miembros del, del Board, de, por parte del distrito.
Our, our community need to be informed, and it's time that the Board and the members of the district do something about it.
Gracias y felicidades a todos nuevamente. Gracias y buenas noches.
Thank you, good night, and congratulations. Thank you. Good night and congratulations to all of you uh again.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Ms. Cunningham.
Okay, um. The next one is Grace Beatty. Are you available? If so, please unmute. And I'm told she's not here either. Okay, moving on, um. And I think I have one more, but I think she's left too, but let me try. Monique Powell, are you available? Not hearing. And I don't think so. I think she, I was told earlier she'd left. Okay, and that is all the comments.
All right, so again, we apologize to our public, your, your information, as always, your comments are very important to us. And we know it was a little delayed and a little lengthy, but hopefully you will reach out to us so we can get that information. I will now move back to the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. I will read, i- i- is there any comments? First of all, let me ask that.
No, there are no comments.
Okay, all right. Well then, if there are no comments, be it resolved that the Board of Education receives the District's Initial Contract Proposal Successor to the Communications Worker of America, Workers of America. Is there a motion?
So move. Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Dr. Hill.
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt.
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina.
Aye.
Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
Dr. Flores.
Aye.
Mrs. Abayos.
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers. Aye. Motion carry. Thank you. Alrighty, where am I? We are now at six point one Resuming Services and that. I will turn, oh, I think it's Dr. Volkmer and then he'll direct from there.
Thank, thank, thank you, President Rogers, uh, board. Thank you for this time. As, as we see COVID, uh, case numbers decreasing consistently. Uh, and, and now the county is officially in the red tier and the district is moving very, very rapidly toward the red tier official designation. Uh, we're working to determine what services we might be able to resume for our students and our families. And so we've added this discussion section or element uh into the board agenda, just so we can bring you an update on new guidance. Uh, new, new opportunities that are available to us uh so that, that uh we can, you can know what we're now allowed to do and, and we can get your thoughts and uh guidance on next steps. Um, this evening we want to specifically talk about athletics and I, I think it was, we had three major shifts in guidance in one week uh related to athletics and so we've been changing on the fly very quickly. Um, and so we're going to talk about athletics uh a little bit in terms of guidance changing around sports, as well as one kind of unique uh situation that we find ourselves in or our students in for AP uh testing. And so we want to thank our, our athletic directors for hanging in there. I think most of them are still on the, on the call if I saw the Brady Bunch screen and so I'm going to turn it over to Sandra and then Anna uh to just bring you a, an update and some information about resuming services.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Thank you, uh, President Rogers and, and uh board members. Um, we wanted to make sure that you were well informed.
Let me pause you. I, I, I'm so sorry. I don't mean to interrupt. But I do see that in the chat, it says I was unable to unmute. Um, Ms. Cunningham, can you let me know what that is saying? From Grace, do you see that?
She was a public speaker.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I happen to see that there. Do you want me to say she's available? I'm sorry, uh, Dr. Wyatt, what'd you say?
Looks like she's still there as well.
Okay, so can we please go ahead and honor, I'm, I'm sorry, um, Dr. Rodriguez.
Unmute her, you're saying?
It's about, something about un, unmute her.
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to share my comments. I am Grace Beatty and I live and serve in the communities surrounding Del Valle whole leadership and STEAM Academy. Tonight, my comments concern the need for oversight. The unanimous decision by this board to renew Savant's charter demonstrates the need for oversight. In the eye of public opinion, it appears to be corrupt when you give a special education building eleven classrooms in total and seven bathrooms to a charter school outside our district owned and operated by a board member's daughter. President Rogers stated according to their lawyers, there was no illegal activity in the process nor the decision, leaving a question that begs to be answered, who provides oversight for this board? Our funding comes from the state and under that agreement, the board promised to handle money appropriately. Now either someone in Sacramento is not doing their job or the state does not know what is happening here. The board casually signed off on a document to the state that misrepresented the number of classrooms available at our site. SBTA is supposed to be the watchdog at the local level, but clearly they have been too preoccupied to fight for kids that are a stone's throw away from the union office. We are left to our own devices. Therefore, we must seek the aid from the media. They could be an adversary if they knew what was happening. The news media may be very interested in knowing that the charter schools operating in this district are underperforming and have been doing so for many years. They may question whether these schools are profiting while underperforming. All over this country, charter schools fail. They take public dollars to start their own businesses. Savant came to our district with zero dollars. Ms. Tillman's charter school never met the threshold for renewal, yet this board overlooked that and renewed this outer district charter and provided over a half a million dollars of taxpayers' money to remodel the building and classrooms taken from a community that is already socio-economically deprived. Eleven classrooms total and seven bathrooms. How is this justifiable? Perhaps the MOU being drafted by Savant's administrators is simply a scapegoat to ease the conscience of those that would dare to deprive this community of much-needed resources. This board will change and violate the MOU and the union will allow it because as a body, you have already demonstrated that you can and will do whatever you want with taxpayers' money, even in the face of our union, after admitting to making several mistakes in order to achieve your expected outcome. Tonight I call and will continue to call for oversight. Since this can of worms is open, construction contracts for the past five years must be scrutinized as well as nonprofits like Women's Empowerment that collect over three hundred dollars per student and Young Visionary, to name a couple that operate within our district. How many more organizations are there? My advice is follow the money. There is a drastic need for oversight, the type that leave no stone unturned. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now go back to Dr. Rodriguez. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, President Rogers. We could get the presentation um posted, please? We're waiting for the um, for tech to post the presentation. Um, I want to thank all of our athletic directors who are here today. Um, just really working to support the kids out in our uh school communities. They have really worked for many hours and, and worked diligently to make sure that athletics is a safe place for our students to, to be uh during this pandemic time. So uh we have all of them here today and I'd like to thank them all for um, for their support and really their commitment to following the rules, to making sure that everyone stays safe. I'm still waiting for the presentation to be posted.
Yeah, it hasn't come up yet.
Well, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and get started and hopefully they'll catch up with us. So on February sixteenth of this school year, um, of this, actually this calendar year, um, the Board of Education authorized athletic conditioning and would allow competition when local conditions um meet state guidelines. And the board also uh commented that staff and student participation must be voluntary. At this point in time, we do have athletics that are in session now and we would like to give a report as far as what is the status of our outdoor sports. Um, as far as their conditioning practice and um their move towards competition as well as um sports um occurring after or over the spring break. And then also give you an update on um some um schematics around testing as well as indoor sports. So I'm going to pass it over now to the athletic director from San Gregonio High School. Uh, Mr. Matt Maida, who will go over um the sports that are actually in session at this time. Matt?
Yes, good evening, board. Um, again, thank you for your direction in moving forward with our athletics during this time. As a Dr. Rodriguez had indicated, there are some sports that have already started um in competitions. Those would actually be cross-country and water polo. Uh, those two sports are actually wrapping up their seasons in the next two weeks. And uh several schools have already competed uh a couple times and in the different sports. Uh, the next sport would be then football and football is going quite fast. Uh, we did enter full contact practice a couple of weeks ago in preparation for uh games this week. Cajon High School is actually the first school to play a real game and they will play um their lower levels on Wednesday, but their upper level, the varsity on Saturday. And then the rest of the schools will play over the next couple of weeks their first games. Um, moving into sports that are beginning after spring break. Uh, we have soccer, I'm sorry, uh, I missed baseball and softball. Baseball and softball are also two sports that can begin uh at the end of this week, beginning Friday. Uh, those sports can begin. Whoops, there we go. Those sports may begin and that will roll over into a spring break. Um, after spring break, we have the sports of soccer, swim, tennis and track that will be starting up. And then golf uh will also go after spring break. Couple of sports that we're really unsure of right now are the indoor sports. Um, as Dr. Volkmer indicated earlier too, the state has been moving at light speed and changing the regulations and the tiers and, and what we need to do. And uh so right now for indoor sports, they are still practicing outside. They're, they've not gone inside yet. Uh, we are waiting for testing protocol to move indoors. That was a new requirement from the uh, the state. Uh, with respect to COVID testing update, uh, Cajon played water polo games already and water polo is a sport that needed COVID testing. And so they were able to use the county of San Bernardino to test their water polo teams for their games. And then um we're going into football and as far as football goes, we are using the HCCL laboratories out of Montclair to do our football testing and will pretty much be testing a couple of days prior to the games coming up each week. And it was the decision that we've been told that regardless of the tier that we're in, uh, we will be testing for football out of the safety of the athletes uh for our schools as well as for our opponents. Um, the entire football season. And we actually did move into red uh below seven this week uh for our district. And we still will continue testing even though we wouldn't have to uh by the state guidelines. Uh, lastly, with respect to spectators, that's another real big uh topic we'll be having to address in the next two weeks. Uh, we are at this time, no fans allowed at the contests. However, we're working on the protocols that will be needed to allow the immediate family um as per the California Department of Public Health guidelines to attend. And we're also seeking a partnership with the Illin Empire Media Group as far as to livestream home football games and possibly some other sports uh via their YouTube channel in order to get more um of the games shown to the public because if we would allow fans in the next few weeks, uh, it would be on a limited basis in order to control these capacities being used in the stadiums and at the fields and to keep people as safe as possible. Dr. Rodriguez, I think that's it for the two slides. If you'd like to take it back over?
Great, thank you, Mr. Maida. So um at this time, uh, we'll pause for a moment, uh, President Rogers, if you would like us to, or we can continue in the presentation.
Yeah, you can continue one. I'm not seeing any, anything that's coming up.
So now we'd like to move on to um our next uh update and that will be Assistant Superintendent Applegate.
Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez and board. Um, tonight we would like to speak to you a little bit of, about a situation that we have with our AP exams. So this year, the college board is providing online options for their AP exams. However, the exemption will be foreign language exams. Obviously, there is a concern with compromising um the credibility of the spoken language portion of the exams. So we have a recommendation that um we are bringing forth to be considered. Uh, we would like to have over six, well, about six hundred and fifty-four students that are enrolled in these foreign language classes be able to take out their eight, able to take AP exams if they would like to do that since that is not an at-home option and will not be. Um, we will be offering those tests in May and June. And all sites that have um plans for these tests have done so and looking at the research and all of the COVID safety rules. Um, it's been vetted through our IMT team and they are, they have very detailed plans um to be able to move forward with that testing. And we also have possibly after the school year ends, there will be an option for in-person testing for physics, calculus, statistics and chemistry as well. They do have a, they will have an online option, but we feel that the students may have a better chance when they are able to take the in-person exam. So that is for your consideration. If you want us to move forward with that. Our sites have been very diligent about coming up with plans where they would be able to do this in person in May.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Applegate. And as we close our presentation, we would like to uh have a special presentation. It's a bit of a surprise. Uh, but we have all of our athletic directors here today and we want to be, we want to just take this opportunity to thank um, Dr. Volkmer for his leadership, his continued commitment to athletics. Um, he has been a pillar in this community um and has really left a legacy for um athletics in our school district from championing um uh our athletic fields as well as making sure that there's equitable distribution of resources to all of our high schools. Um, and we really want to thank uh Dr. Volkmer for those efforts. And as a token of our appreciation, we have a special thing for you and uh she'll be walking in now.
Oh, wow. Let me get him on my screen. Where is he? So.
Um, so I'm sorry, board, I'm give me just a second if you will. And I'll, and I'll, I'll model it for you. Wow. As the athletic directors know very well, it's hard to uh get me speechless. But if you can't see that, and I don't know if you can.
Yes, we can.
It's actually a Letterman's jacket.
Nice.
All the letters from our wonderful schools.
Congratulations.
And, and uh some of my various positions in the school district on the chevrons. And uh wow.
Let's see your back one more time. Turn around.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
Throw the back.
That's the one right there.
Yes.
Um.
That's beautiful.
Well, well, uh. Board, I ha- I have to say you, you, you earned every bit of this uh Letterman's jacket along with me. Your, your commitment to putting uh money behind our athletic programs was so instrumental to us being able to do great work. So I want to, I want to first and foremost give the, give credit to the board for, for everything they've done in supporting athletics. Um, I, you know, it was, it was an absolute joy for me to work with the Athletic Strategic Plan uh and um, uh, and along with our athletic directors uh because it's so powerful for our kids and you know, when we first started talking about it, it was about facilities, but then we've talked, started talking about character and the importance of good coaching and so many, so many improvements have been made uh from fields to, you know, state-of-the-art uh facilities, athletic trainers, which is something that very few districts have at every single uh school and, and the athletic directors have been great partners. They push, they shove, they want, they, and, and it's all comes from a good place uh to say, you know what, we want to do more for our student athletes and so uh I will, I will cherish this always. I, I'm sure I've forgotten to say something. more for our student athletes. And so uh I will, I will cherish this always. I I'm sure I've forgotten to say something. Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Howell. I'm getting these chats. Uh, but anyway, thank, thank you so much for, for this honor. I will, I will uh wear it proudly to games once we can start having games again, which I very much look forward to, but tha- thank you very much. I'm, I'm deeply touched and humbled. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Dr. Volkmer. You always refer to it as a world-class a- athletic department, so we appreciate you. All right, we are now moving on down to. And I, I believe, was that it, Dr. Rodriguez? I don't see. Okay, there you are. Was that it?
Thank you very much, President Rogers.
All right, we're moving to eight point O reports and comments by union organizations, starting with eight point one San Bernardino Teachers Association. Is there a representative?
Good evening, President Rogers, members of the board, Dr. Volkmer and Cabinet. I'm Ashley Vita Salcala, representing the three thousand members of the San Bernardino Teachers Association. At this late hour, I will make my comments brief. I just want to congratulate Mr. Irvin on his appointment as superintendent. And we look forward to continuing our collaborative culture and to hearing from him soon, how we're going to move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now moving to eight point two Columbia School Employer Association. Is there a representative tonight?
Hi, this is Maria Lopez.
Hello.
Um, I am the Communications Officer for C S C A, and I wanted to say good evening to the board, the cabinet and the, and President Rogers. Thank you for having me this evening. After months and months of negotiations, we have finally made some progress. We negotiated long and hard for our essential workers. Our main goal was to achieve fairness in pay for each of them. They are the front lines. They are on the front lines every week. And others are on the front lines every day. It's no surprise that there is uncertainty within our workforce and the outside world whether we should vaccinate or not. For those who aren't sure, we understand your hesitance. Although the vaccine is not FDA approved yet, it is recommended for emergency use by the FDA. And because of this, we ask you to please acknowledge that not everyone is vaccine-ready. As you ask more and more classified employees to come back to their sites, please take into consideration the employees at work distributions and have more and more contact with the unvaccinated world. To all the employees that have been vaccinated, we applaud you for your bravery and appreciate you for keeping yourself and others safe. Now, in addition to this, we um, I wanted just to mention that we need to fix the culture within San Bernardino City Unified. By that, I mean that classified workers are treated differently. We have struggled a long time to be respected. Please remember where you came from. We do not all come from the same tree, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be valued the same as others. We are vital and we will always be the backbone of the district. We need classified employees in all levels, from the bottom to the top, to change the dynamic within our district and make sure our voices are heard and not ignored. To all the essential workers and teachers, thank you for your dedication. I raise up my voice, not so that I can shout, but so that those without a voice can be heard. We cannot all succeed when half of us are held back. Lastly, as we get closer to welcoming our new superintendent, we would like to thank Dr. Volkmer for your dedication and commitment as interim superintendent. We know this was an incredibly difficult task. Welcome to San Bernardino City Unified, um, Mr. Irving. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you. We're now moving to eight point three Communication Workers of America. Is there a representative tonight? If not, I'm not hearing anyone. Um, eight point four San Bernardino School Police Officers Association. Is there a representative tonight? All right, if not, we're moving to nine point O presentations. Nine point one Second Interim Report and Budget and Local Control and Accountability Plan Update.
Thank you, thank you, President Rogers. Um, Board, tonight, uh, we're going to bring you a a critical piece of the budget uh cycle where you'll be able to take a look at uh the trending of our spending so far in the current school year, as well as a, a, a look at what our multi-year projections will be. Uh, I want to thank Janie and and her team. Uh, this is a, a lot of work goes into this. Uh, and then I also want to uh commend uh Mrs. Applegate uh and her team for the great work they're doing on our LCAP process. You'll get an LCAP update as well. Uh, and so these are both vital pieces of what goes on within the district. I want to thank Janie and Anna again for, for all that they're doing along with their team. So I'll turn it over to Janie first.
Thank you, Dr. Volkmer. Good evening, um, Board. President Rogers and Vice President um Scott Wyatt and Board members. We'll look for the presentation and we'll move through it. Um, you have the full packet and the full report. Just wait. There we go. Go ahead and advance it. Again, it'll be the interim and LCAP update. Next slide. Our typical topics, looking at what's going on. And as Dr. Volkmer said, um, we will be um, sharing all of that with you as well as a positive certification. Next slide. So state revenues have exceeded Governor Newsom's projections. You've heard that. You're going to hear a lot about these next two areas. Um, there's four point six billion for expanded uh learning, academic, mental health and social emotional support. Uh, roughly thirty-eight million for our district. And there is also a grant for safe-in-person instruction that um the team will talk about in the next presentation. It's for bringing students back. Um, and there are specific dates around that. What we do know is whatever money is left over for those that do not open will get redistributed to districts, so we'll away more information as well as the fiscal outlook for next year in the May revision. And again, you know, um, the state will approve the final budget by June thirtieth. Next slide. So some of our assumptions, um, we, we did, we do have fewer, uh, two thousand, over two thousand students, fewer this year. We are held harmless at the two thousand nineteen twenty um level for L C F F. Um, funding will be the greater of the nineteen twenty or this year, so we'll be using nineteen twenty. When we come back, we assume that we're going to, that ha- at least half of those kids will return. And then in our multi-year, we'll assume the historical half percent decline per year from there, so um, hopefully we get all two thousand students back, but we typically do decline a half a percent to almost a one percent each year. This year, we did not receive a COLA, but the governor is proposing a COLA that compounds what we would have got this year with the COLA for next year, and we're estimating that at three point eight four percent. And one point two eight percent the following year. We'll see what happens in the May revise. Next slide. Um, a Dr. Flores, you've asked this a couple of times, the current savings. So what we're projecting for, from the closure is that the savings is about thirty point three million, and that's reflected in our report. Again, we have all the Pers and Sters in health and welfare. We show a reduction due of F T E due to declining enrollment. Um, we've spread out the S R two um stimulus dollars over this year and through twenty-two, twenty-three. And then we have just absolutely fabulous news. On top of that, we expect to get about two hundred and twenty-seven million from the America Rescue Plan um stimulus package. And um as part of our assumptions, we assume that we're using part of those dollars to offset budget deficits. So this really helps with our budget outlook, outlook. Just keep in mind, these are one-time dollars. And once they have been expended, we will have to ensure that our budget is in um alignment. Next, next slide. And then that twenty-two, twenty-three is when we don't have that um hold harmless clause. And so again, getting our kids back in and high attendance will really help as we move into the twenty-two, twenty-three year in about a year. Next slide. Um, you may be wondering what the one-time federal funding, the hundred and two million can be spent on. And then again, you heard that we're going to also get two hundred and twenty-seven million, but these are the areas that the funding can be used for. And the teams are working on the spending plan. Next slide. Again, multi-year projections, we take um our assumptions that everything that we know today and we um we project what that will look like o- over the three-year time period. We're required to do this by A B twelve hundred. And again, we will update this in May when we know uh more about next year's budget. Next slide. Here's our multi-year projection. This does not include the two hundred and twenty-seven million that I just spoke about, because we just heard about it. We don't have a lot of details of when we'll receive the money. So this multi-year projection will, will change, obviously, because we'll be getting those dollars. But um you can see in twenty-two, twenty-three, where Pers and Sters start to increase again, that we start that deficit spending on line three, again, with these new dollars that will probably push all of this out um to, and the outlook will look better for at least another year. Next slide. And this is our combined general fund. I'm not going to go line by line. You, you all have the packet. Um, and again, it's already changed with the, with the receipt of the two hundred and twenty-seven million. Next slide. Positive certification that we are presenting to you this evening. And next slide. Our uh next steps, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Applegate.
Thank you, Janie. Uh, we will have now Mr. Comnet go ahead and present our LCAP update.
Hello, good evening, um, President Rogers and Vice President Wyatt, Board members, uh, Dr. Volkmer and Cabinet, as well as our stakeholders. Um, I wanted to uh welcome um Mr. Irvin to our S B C U S D family. Uh, look forward to working with him in the upcoming future. Uh, next slide, please. So tonight, uh, I wanted to share with everyone an update on our learning continuity and attendance plan. If you recall back in December, we gave an initial um uh update to the, to the board. And uh, since that point, we've been working on a monthly basis with our LCAP community and stakeholders uh each month. And uh, we also have the, another uh LCAP meeting scheduled for this Thursday evening from five-thirty to seven. Next slide. So tonight's objectives, I just want to share three brief objectives with uh, with the board. Uh, a brief overview of the uh, as I mentioned, the twenty-twenty-one learning continuity and attendance plan, the, the process. I wanted to share some of the activities that uh the Learning Continuity Plan uh has uh focused on, and I want to share some input and feedback regarding our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-four LCAP goals. Next slide. So just a brief uh step back in, as you recall, the uh uh due to COVID nineteen, our twenty twenty twenty-one uh LCAP was replaced with the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan. And from January to June, uh, we will be working and developing um and submitting to the board for approval in June, the uh twenty twenty-one, twenty-four uh LCAP. That LCAP will include a, a variety of different components. It'll include the uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty uh annual update, a summary update. It'll include this year's twenty twenty-one uh Learning Continuity Plan Annual Update. It will also include um the uh Senate Bill eighty-six, uh Expanded Learning Time and Academic Interventions Grants Information. It will also include the budget overview for parents as well as the LCAP Federal Addendum. So that, the LCAP is a comprehensive planning document that uh covers a lot of uh information for our board, for our stakeholders as well. Next slide. So a part of the second uh objective this evening was to share that, that update. So I'll start with the distance learning. We have a uh refresh and replenish technology plan. And to reassure the board that we're going to remain one-to-one with our school-to-home for students grades three through twelve. Uh, we'll be two-to-one in grades TK to two. This will allow for the students to have a device with, at school as well as at home. We'll have a kind of a centrally operated uh device, maintenance, update and replacement uh by I T for both students and staff. And we're going to have standardized tech tools like Pardeck or Screencastify or Zoom that we'll be providing for, as a central um resource. We'll also be supporting our sites with uh site tech coaches and professional development for implementation. Instructional program. We will, uh, we have focused on early literacy program where we've um utilized our resident guest teachers to work in with uh small groups. Uh, we want to expand that to K six. We also have our support personnel, including uh interns that help with small group instruction. We provided kindergarten P E kits. This is fantastic. This, this, these were actual manipulatives that we uh were able to uh send to our, our students at home so that they can be actively engaged in P E. We also have extended learning opportunities planned for all students, including summer school, intercession and and uh looking into extended year possibilities. Next slide. I want to focus on a few uh specific uh student groups. Uh, our English learner students. We focused on expanding and updating our uh E L D digital curriculum. We have intern support specifically for our English learners at the secondary level, focusing on our newcomer students. And the collaboration and training with other departments that include our enrollment center, ed services, student services. Um, our student wellness group for curriculum guide work, professional development tutoring. We continue to grow in order to correctly identify and place uh and meet the needs of our English learners. Next slide, please. Also focus on our African-American students. Uh, specifically, uh, Dr. Greer has um sought the use of, of our, of a high school equity program specialist. And this person will be specifically looking at A to G success by way of the integrated math performance and uh for ninth grade success, as well as access to and success in advanced courses like Avid or Trio or Pathways, Honors, A P I B. For special education students, we really focused in on in-home one-on-one support offered through maximum, maximum. And this is a, a, a service that provides in-person I E P support inclusive of of uh behavioral and psychological services. In uh in-home tutoring support is fully operational for students with the multi-tiered systems and support process and those awaiting initial assessment through Valdez Tutoring. We have one-on-one aides available to support students with I E Ps. We have additional tutoring support with Let's Go Learn, uh, follow-up for identified students with I E P support for math, E L A, Spanish skills, formative testing, I-Link and Khan Academy. And as well as a focus on professional development to meet the specific needs of our special education students. Next slide, please. We also focus on our foster students uh and students experiencing homelessness. Um, we're looking into the possibility of impossible, of in-person small cohorting throughout strategic locations in the city. We also continue to support with basic necessities as well as uh tutoring, uh partnerships with community organizations and device and hotspot needs to ensure that our, our most vulnerable students have access uh to the curriculum. Next slide, please. We also are providing uh support to our targeted support for school progress, our T S S P schools. Uh, with targeted assessments to inform small group instruction. We have uh T S S P program specialists who have conducted over sixty data analysis and planning support sessions for staff. And T S S P school teams have used attendance engagement teams uh that are working to connect with students who have not participated in distance learning, trying to capture and engage our maximum number of students in our programming. Next slide, please. We have a focus on professional development. Our mental health first aid trainings continue to be available to staff. This, this really helps administration to identify warning signs and risk factors to mental health concerns. We have a focus on teacher clarity. Teacher clarity is of best practice uh to good first instruction to ensure the teacher understanding of expectations, kind of having that high mindset and instructional delivery where students can learn better. We also have a, a, a focus on data analysis, letting data drive our learning. And and our acceleration focus is on uh, on learning for not only gap closure, but also for students who are meeting standards and pushing them above, uh, beyond that. Next slide, please. We also have a focus on our mental health and, and social. We also have a focus on our mental health and, and social emotional wellbeing. We continue to have counseling and mental health therapies provided virtually. We have streamlining of the process for mental health services for easier and more timely access. Development of responsive services, protocol for students at risk of self-harm. Welfare checks are being conducted for students. We have supports for our LGBTQ plus youth has been expanded. And personalized letters for 3,600 students in immunization for physical return to schools with mobile immunization clinics being held through Borrego Health. Next slide, please. So our, our pupil engagement and outreach, Operation Student Recovery 1000, Dr. Bykandova, with, under the leadership of Dr. Rodriguez was held on February 23rd, 2021, where over 1,045 students were visited by over 168 staff or participants, focusing on the most vulnerable student populations that included African-American students, English learners, foster youth and homeless. During this February 23rd, Operation Student Recovery, some 40 students received devices or hotspots so they could reconnect and connect back to the system. And of the 1,045 students, 806 students were present at the school the entire following week as a result of this operation. So of just a huge success. We also are, I have noticed a reduction in chronic absenteeism reduced by 1.3% between December and January. And the Positive Youth Development Department has met with 50% of our sites during staff meetings to review proper use of attendance codes, best practices and a tiered approach to reducing absenteeism. Again, the focus is on getting our kids connected, engaging our students so that we can continue learning. Next slide, please. And school nutrition. We redesigned food delivery. So we have Wednesday, one day a week on Wednesdays. We have 23 sites from eight to 11 a.m. Providing food supply, seven-day food supply that includes breakfast, lunch, dinner and snacks. We also have two sites operating in the afternoon from two to five, same on Wednesday, offering the same seven-day food supply. Over the past week, we provided over 218,755 meals. 72,393 snacks were served. In February, sites began distributing 20-pound seasonal produce boxes to families. Next slide, please. As a, as a follow-up to our, our last LCAP meeting on the 23rd of February, a number of our board members were present, provided insightful input as well as our stakeholders who were present. And also through our surveys, we were able to really look deep at our LCAP goals that involve academic achievement, school climate, campus environment and student family and community involvement. And we really wanted to focus on capturing the essence of, of what San Bernardino City Unified School District is trying to accomplish in these three areas. I put on this chart for you to see that, that we are held accountable by the California dashboard. And we are also responsible for meeting the eight state priorities. What this chart demonstrates is the alignment and of the dashboard with the eight state priorities. I attempted to color code those so that you can see how they are infused within our goals. And these will be the goals that we use for the next, next three-year cycle of our LCAP. And we'll review these along the way throughout the three years and, and refine as necessary through our stakeholder input process. Next slide, please. Our next steps. Wanted to conclude with our March there. We do have a March LCAP community meetings, I mentioned earlier, this Thursday, the 18th from 5:30 to seven. And we'll be sharing an, an update much similar to what I just shared with the board tonight. In April, we'll continue our monthly meetings. The 20th, we have another LCAP community meeting. May, we've got two meetings and in June we have another two meetings. So again, wanted to stress that this is a process that we take as a collaborative intent to make sure that we engage all of our stakeholders, parents, community, board members, staff, classified, certificated students, you name it. We want the input to help us build an LCAP that really fits our identified needs, our community needs as well as the, the needs of our students. And with that, board, I thank you for the time tonight to share this update with you.
Thank you. And Dr. Flores, I knew you had a question for Ms. Christakis, I believe.
Yes, Janie. I know that we, that we saved three, 30 million, right? 30.3 million?
Yes. That's our projection. That's our projection.
Okay, and then I saw you project, I can't remember where that slide is, that we would be 30.8 and deficit. That's, that's a projection?
Yes, and we're saving, you know, setting aside the savings to help with that.
Okay, so it isn't 60 million. It's that 30.3 million will offset that 30.8 million?
So we will set aside the 30 million. And we have our reserve and we, let me get to the right page here. And that money will go towards the deficit. We're also going to use some of the federal dollars to, for some of the expenditures. So it's really closer to 39 million, but we're using other dollars to.
Other dollars from there?
Yeah.
I, I saw a, today, I don't know, I guess it's flexible, but I saw that we might be getting more than money than you said, like 279 million.
So I, I first heard a higher number, Dr. Flores, and then we checked with school services in the county office. And so the 227 is the latest we know, but as soon as we get the official amount, we'll update the board on that, but school services showed the lower amount.
Okay, thank you. And also on the 4.6 million, billion dollars that we're getting, I mean, the state, how much of that are we getting?
It is 38.3 million estimated.
Okay, 38 point, okay. And I was on a webinar with CSBA on AB 86, which is the bill that allocated all this money. And they specifically said that 10% of that money had to be used for paraprofessionals.
That's correct. It's for hiring, retaining extra hours, so a combination of that.
For, for our paraprofessionals. So board, I think this would be an opportunity for our, grow our own interns that are now interns to become paraprofessionals so that we could pay them. I think we have to expend that money in by October or November of, or December of 2023. Is that correct?
Or October 23? So the state dollars are 20.
22.
Two, yes.
Oh, 2022?
Yes, and the federal dollar, some of the federal dollars will go into 23 and 24, but.
Well, this would be a perfect way of looking at what our teachers need in terms, and our kids in terms of support in some of the, our learning acceleration plan, our ASAP. And so I, you know, we'll have to look at that and maybe, you know, determine how much of that, what, what 10% is in terms.
And the team's working, yes, and the team's working on a plan so that we can.
Oh, great, okay, all right. I was really pleased to hear that.
Yeah, we, I was really pleased to see that, the money, that's great, that's great.
And then it would go for our paraprofessionals. Okay, thank you.
And then I just cautioned the board that, you know, it is one-time dollars. So once they're gone, you know, anything, it, it's difficult for sustaining ongoing costs, so that's.
Unless we just tell them, you know, that this is for this year and.
Or two, yeah.
Or two, I think it's, we could probably stretch it to two. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tillman?
Yes. I mean, this is amazing because we're getting, well, we had a hundred million dollars from the previous bill, right, Ms. Christakis? That's supposed to be spent in this upcoming school year. And then this addition of 200, 200 million dollars.
The 102 million has to be spent by September 30th of 2023. So we'll send you a BC with all the dates on it. And then the 227 is estimated to be spent through September 30th of 2024. And so that allows for a lot of support for our students over the next several summers and intercessions.
And this is actually my point. I mean, there's been a lot of damage. I think we all admit that the way we've been doing education is not the best way. But I think we're, we're getting to a point now where I think, you know, the, we have sight on opening almost regular in the next school year. And, and we, we should use that money to do everything we can to help us do it the right way. And then I don't know in terms of summer school, where are we going to be able to do a, a summer school in person or where we're at with that? But we should have the discussion also and, and do it in a way where it's going to benefit the students that have had learning loss because of the way that we've been doing it for this past year. But also I heard the athletic directors talking about the testing. All that costs money. So I, I think it's critical that we involve everyone to have a discussion on how we can best spend the money and do it thoughtfully and diligently. But the need is there. And I think that's what the whole purpose of the, the additional funding is. And the way I see it, you know, we, we, we suspect we're going to have the surge and it's sad. You can't, I was, I watched the numbers every day for COVID-19 and you see the hundreds of people that are passing away even to this day because of the, the viruses. And then you have these new variants. So I, I, I know we, we talk about encouraging our staff to get the vaccination, but we also should work with our parents and the community that try, try to get as many of them vaccinated also, which would allow us to have our kids because we know the kids don't get as, as sick and ill and they definitely have numbers for death. So I think one of our path to opening, I'm excited about it. But, but, but Ms. Christakis, just make sure that we find a way to communicate to all our staff that we have additional funding to mitigate the challenges with opening for COVID-19. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
All right, those were all the comments. And we will now move to 9.2 Accelerated Student Achievement Plan ASAP update.
Thank, thank you, President Rogers. Board, a lot has changed since we last met. As you know, the legislature and governor approved AB 86, which provides incentives to resume in-person instruction for school districts. We're going to provide you a general overview of this new law. We believe it's our obligation to make sure you have the latest and most recent information. So we're just going to give you an overview, a fairly high-level overview of what the, the various elements are of that new law. The second part, the second thing we're going to do this evening is part of the board's decision in November to remain in distance learning included the possibility of providing services to stable, what we call stable student groups, or some people refer to as cohorts, when it is safe to do so. And we just want to give you a little bit of information around that particular topic. And then finally, and Mr. Tillman and I did not rehearse this, I promise. But as we turn our attention to the summer and the next school year, we want to give you some preliminary, preliminary information regarding our accelerated student achievement plan. And just, just one comment, I know the hour is getting late. If we've learned anything over the past year and we've learned a lot, it's that anything can happen and we need to be prepared for ever-changing guidance and circumstances. So we've adopted the phrase, prepared for excellence, ready for anything. No one can predict with any real certainty, at least, what we will be facing in August. We want to ensure that we're ready, we stand ready to serve our students and our families well, no matter what the circumstances we might be, might be facing. So tonight, we're just going to share some general ideas and possibilities for next school year to gather your feedback. And I want to thank the many people that have been involved and are involved in doing this work on a daily basis and making it come to life for our kids. We know it's no easy task. We have a big challenge in front of us and I want to say thank you to them. They've been working diligently to get us to this point and thinking ahead to the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel and Anna to lead us through the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Volkmer. While that's being brought up, thank you, board. Thank you, President Rogers. Dr. Wyatt, vice president, board members, want to welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Irving. And yes, just as Dr. Volkmer said, we are just going to, I'll go through the beginning of the presentation. Just give an overview of what the new legislation has for us. This was voted on and, and signed by our governor on March 5th. So it's still pretty new and just its implications for, not, not its implications, just so the board is well aware of what's going on at the state level. And talk a little bit further into what Janie had mentioned about the two, the funding sources. So with that, if you could, next slide, please. So our objectives tonight, as always, Mr. Bittier will be sharing our COVID cases and vaccination dates to date, both for the county and for our local enrollment areas. I will provide that summary of AB 86. It's referred to in-person instruction and expanded learning opportunities. There's two parts to it, so you'll get a slide on each one. Dr. Flores had requested that we bring information for what could be criteria for deemed safe to do so. So we are bringing that to you as well as for the potential stable groups that could be, could return for some in-person supports and, and who that might be. Then I'll turn it over to Ms. Applegate. She'll update you on our ASAP plan and we will close out with distance learning in action. We're bringing another video back to you highlighting our elementary physical education. Next slide, please. Here's the recap from last board meeting on board. Quite a few things took place. You approved the proclamation of recognizing Cesar Chavez. You received and accepted the audit finding, the audit report with no findings, acknowledging the quality of SBC USD's financial management team. You acknowledge our nutrition services for our new drive-through food distribution events and providing carts to families who walk to pick up those meals. Following a detailed report on the new family engagement strategic plan, you praised the family engagement team for their efforts. Members of the board, you also praised the team for Read Across America events. And then finally, board, you heard comments acknowledged and acknowledged that the charter agreement addressed concerns and reported that no conflict of interest existed before the Bart Preparatory Academy application for renewal. Next slide, please. We continue with our guiding principles. These have not changed. In all your decision-making, you have ensured the health and physical safety of students and staff while adhering to the ever-changing federal, state and county guidance, while still providing high-quality learning experiences and safe and accessible working conditions. So these continue to be the guiding principles that you are using in your decision-making. Next slide. Here is the progression of instructional models. We continue to stay in phase one distance learning based on the, the board action you took on November 17th. And in that action, you did mention the possibility of bringing back small, stable groups of students which would move us towards phase two distance learning plus. This is the, the phase that will propose some potential, potential student groups that could be coming back. And again, also sharing some criteria for when deemed safe to do so. Next slide, please. So board, we have a new image for you. Thank you, Dr. Volkmer, for sharing our motto, prepared for excellence, ready for anything. If you can click, please. Here's the image that we'll be bringing back to you on a regular basis. So when we prepare for excellence and we're ready for anything, we're, it's this idea of cultivating learning environments. And we've really got four that we're looking at. There's the learning environment between, you know, now and then June. There's the summer work. There's our school year and in the school year, you can see there could be in-person, there could be blended based on guidance. And we may have to have distance based off what happens. We have to be ready for any of those, those potential environments. And we will be designing a virtual academy that will be offered to our families as an additional option. For each one of the, these learning environments, you can see in the trunk of the tree, there are many components that we're preparing for. So there's the facilities and safety, there's the fiscal support, there's staffing, there's the communication both to our schools, to our departments, and of course, to our greater community, our families. There's the instructional model and of course, social emotional of supports and wellness. For tonight's purposes, if you would click. For tonight's purposes, if you would click twice, please. We're only going to focus on April through June and summer. So in future presentations, we'll bring back information on next school year and the virtual academy. Tonight focusing only on April and June through and and summer twenty twenty and aligning that with A B eighty-six. If you could, next slide, please. Oh, one more. There we go. So let's get into A B eighty-six. Again, it's referred to as in-person instruction and expanded learning opportunities. Next slide. So the big overview, this is what the state did. They allocated six point six billion dollars from Proposition ninety-eight general fund to support two programs. So the first program is there was two billion dollars for in-person instruction, and it's a grant. They're actually both grants, but we do not have to apply. Districts are automatically going to be allocated these funds. The two-point, the two billion in-person instruction grant is to support offering any in-person learning experience um, by April first. I'll go greater into detail in the next slide on that. The four point six billion is for the expanded learning opportunities, and that's to support learning recovery. I'll give some overview on that, and then Ms. Applegate will talk about what we're proposing for that expanded learning opportunities. For both of these grants, there is a reporting requirement. We are required to report any positive case that we're aware of to our local public health within a twenty-four-hour window, so that would be employees and or students. And we're required to have bi-weekly reporting to the California Department of Public Health around specific data points, around overall enrollment, the number of students that we have in-person instruction, the number of students we have in a hybrid setting, the number of students we would have in distance learning. If we're offering any stable groups, stable student groups, and what those number of students are, and the employees that would be also working in person. So that's the big overview of this grant. Again, we do not apply for it. It's automatically given to us. But I want to point out that there are some fiscal penalties specific to one A, the two billion in-person instruction. If we do not start offering in-person by April first, now for us, because that would be spring break, ours would be April fifth, we lose one percent of that grant every day through May fifteenth, and then we would forfeit forfeit the remainder of the grant. So that's specific to the in-person instruction. Next slide, please. So let me talk a little bit about this in-person instruction, that first part of it. S B C U S D is projected to receive twenty-three point two million dollars. We would use this for anything that's related to in-person instruction. So that includes the safety pieces, that includes potential testing, anything related to bringing students back for in-person instruction between April first and the end of the school year. Who is eligible? Well, this really depends on our local context. But what is required is that we do have to offer in-person instruction. It can be hybrid. But depending on our local color tier, then we have various requirements. So let me quickly explain what those requirements are. If we were still in deep purple, the only people we could, the only in-person we could bring back would be our stable student groups, prioritizing those groups. So it would be students with special needs. It it would be, it could be our homeless and foster youth. It could be our students who have needs for graduation. The district can, they've got a very lengthy group of students that we can choose from. We would identify those. But if we're deep purple, we could only offer it to our stable cohorts, our stable student groups. Once we go into purple, we have to continue to offer to those stable student groups, and we have to add the option for all of our students kinder through second grade. When we get to the red tier, then we have to offer the in-person instruction, which again, could be hybrid, to all of our students in our elementary setting and at least one grade level in the secondary and the stable student group, the prioritized groups. The requirements for in-person, we would have to have our COVID nineteen safety plan reviewed and approved by our local public health and then posted on the S B C U S D homepage. So those are the requirements for that portion of A B eighty-six. Next slide, please. A B eighty-six, the Expanded Learning Opportunity Grant, we are projected to receive thirty-eight point three million dollars. Um, how can those funds be used? Janie spoke to this slightly, and I believe, Dr. Flores, you spoke about it a bit as well. Extended school year or school day, so summer school tutoring, learning recovery programs or credit recovery, some kind of integrated student support services, so wellness supports for our students, professional development for our certificated and our classified. This is also the ten percent that you are referring to, Dr. Flores, for our paraprofessionals, falls into this this portion of the grant, and we can use it for connectivity access. So hotspots or and or devices if need be. Who is eligible for this? All of our students, T K through twelve. It is not program-specific. It's all students are eligible. And the requirements are that the district has to offer supplemental academic, social, emotional well-being and behavior support, professional development for our our staff, and then finally, meals for our students. Next slide, please. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Vittier, and he'll talk about our case rates to date.
Thank you, Dr. Monaris. Good evening, Board.
I'm sorry, I was on mute and I was talking. Before you begin, I believe Dr. Flores has a question, comment for.
Yes, uh, for Dr. Monitis and I and for the team, right, and Anna Applegate. Um, I believe, you know, your metaphor, your visual metaphor of a tree is really, really great. Because trees, to me, show cultivation, that we're cultivating. You know, the soil, we're growing, uh, we're growing mines, we're growing our children, our students. We are the gardeners, the the ones that water and, you know, provide the, well, we are the ones that provide the water and help the tree to to grow. Of course, nature helps with the sun and the soil, so Mother Nature. But I I I really, I really appreciate that metaphor. And all the, and and the trunk symbolizes, you know, the core. And I think that's very, very good. And I think that, um, you know, that we, uh, as a board, want to honor, you know, our commitment to health and safety. And so I I just want to reiterate that to our public. And I'll wait for the questions till the end, but I just wanted to make that comment that I I think that was really very profound visual metaphor. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Okay, Mr. Vittier.
Thank you, Madam President and Board. Good evening. Um, as of last Sunday, you may know the county entered the red tier or substantial tier. Uh, the most recent data on the far right of this chart is between February twenty-eighth and March sixth. Uh, the county shows currently five point one new cases per one hundred thousand residents. Our school district boundaries, so it's an S B C U S D, are also in the red tier now with six point eight new cases per one hundred thousand. The city of San Bernardino, although it's close to moving to the red tier, it still remains in the widespread purple tier as of this last reporting period with eight point three new cases per one hundred thousand residents. Next slide, please. So on the vaccine front, we're seeing more availability with vaccines. State and local counties have began vaccinating persons between the ages of sixteen and sixty-four with serious underlying medical conditions or disabilities. Within the city of San Bernardino, we only show that about seventeen percent of the eligible population, meaning eighteen years and older at this time, has either begun or is fully vaccinated. Breaking that down a little further for you, nine percent of the eligible population is fully vaccinated, while the other eight percent percent has begun with their first dose. We will be sending out a survey, and we did hear the board, the last meeting, we'll be sending out a sample, a simple sample survey to our employees in April to get an idea of what percentage have been vaccinated, just to help with our planning efforts. Um, the county continues to thank us and you as the board for the use of Royal Valley High School. Uh, this has been a large hub for vaccinations and has been a a great source for our community as well as our employees. And that's the update I have for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next slide. Before I go into this, I do want to give um, our our communications department, Dr. Flores, you know, we kind of give them the idea of what we want, and they make it come to life. So that that tree comes, you know, huge kudos to our communications team. I think it's David and Daniel who do it together. All right, so moving on. So now we're going to go into the, um, just a reminder of the the action you took, Board, very courageously on November seventeenth. You, um, you know, gave direction to remain in distance learning through the end of the twenty twenty-one school year. And you added in the idea of person, in-person accommodations for small groups of identified students as part of the phase two instruction allowed by state and local guidance when it's safe to do so. So the next slide, we'll talk, I'll show you what is some potential criteria for what what's safe to do so would be. Next slide, please. So two two criteria to consider. Um, first one being that our enrollment boundaries would be in red, and they are at this point. You see that on the graph, the chart there, and that our schools are set for physical distancing, including sanitation and safety protocols. So as a district and county, you can see we're at the red as of now. We, the the, um, the data does not come for the positivity rate by district. So that that information we do not have, unfortunately, but we do have the district and the county as the for case rates, and then we can see what the county is um, in terms of positivity rates, and you see that we're in orange. So these are the criteria that we're offering as for consideration for what would be deemed safe to do so, that we're at least in the red or or orange or yellow, so lower, and that our schools are physically set up for physical distancing, including sanitation and safety protocols. Next slide. And the small, stable groups that we offer for consideration would be our newcomers, grades K through twelve, our special education students specifically, our students in our mild to moderate settings, and our students who are in homeless situations, unsheltered shelters, transition homes, um, motels. Those would be the three groups we would, um, you know, consider for in-person. And that in-person would start no sooner than Monday, April twelfth. And I want to make this very clear, they would stay in distance learning. They would have an additional two hours twice a week for additional learning support, where we would bring, again, small, stable groups of students, and they would not mix with other student groups. Um, and they would come twice a week for two hours for help with their asynchronous, maybe help logging in. The supervision of these students would not be the classroom teacher. We would have work with H R to have others to do the supervision. The instruction would come through distance learning. We would, we would offer a space to help them with their work and and bring them along, not every day and not the full day. Next slide. And from here, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Applegate. I did, I shared with you um, the overview of A B eighty-six. She's going to get into the ASAP, which is the the part that is the extended learning time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Monitis. Good evening once again, Board. So what I'd like to share with you tonight is a very preliminary look at our ASAP or our accelerated student achievement plan. And as you know, the legislation was recently passed, A B eighty-six. And this is S B C U S D response to the legislation. It's an all-hands approach in moving forward with helping to accelerate student learning so that we can close gaps and really make sure our kids not only are closing gaps, but also having enrichment opportunities through different learning. So as you can see, there are some components in this plan that were outlined in A B eighty-six. So we will be looking very closely at S E L, at engagement and outreach with our families and our community. There are going to be some very high-impact specific strategies and activities around teaching and learning. And of course, we're going to have many extended supplemental student services and support as we move forward with this plan. We just want you to know that it's a very intentional plan. We're taking a very close look at the data that we do have, and we have been assessing our students and looking to see where the needs might be. And this is a response to that, to make sure that we are are meeting their needs and recovering any learning and accelerating learning. We have interdivisional work going on, interdepartmental. Our directors, our staff, our site leaders have been involved. And we even have a parent committee that will also be on board, that Dr. Monitis will be heading up to make sure that we have input from all of our stakeholders. So this is just a beginning look. You will have a chance to check in with this plan a couple of different times. But I do want to put in front of you some of the high-impact things that are happening right now. So this plan, some of these things are already being implemented, but we're talking about through the summer and the next two years as well. So if I could have the next slide, please. So Board, right now, what we're looking at are some very high impactful activities, strategies that we're looking at. So as you can see, we are having a, we are planning for a summer school, a very intensive summer school between June seventh and the twenty-fifth. So that's fifteen days, and it's a little bit longer day than we've been used to. We will still be running our credit recovery summer program as we always have. But in addition, we will be running summer school for all, for all of our students. And as you can see, the, there's an asterisk there because many of these things are still pending negotiations. We're working with our our unions to make sure that they are involved as well. We are also going to be proposing extended year. So for an additional ten days next year, we'll be working with calendar committees and other stakeholders to see when the most appropriate time for those additional days would be. We are looking at winter and and spring intercession as well. So again, a negotiated item and making sure that we get feedback from all of our stakeholders. As you know, Board, tonight, you're going to have the first reading of the new temporary board policy under the COVID mitigation policy to align the graduation requirements for our students who need that type of support, because due to COVID, having some adversity and some issues on not meeting all the requirement graduations. So that is already taking place. Uh, we also have a great company that we're working with called Brainfuse that will be providing tutoring for all, and we're looking into more. So all sites right now are providing tutoring. They they all have, again, all hands on deck, providing tutoring. This company will be above and beyond the tutoring that we're already providing. It's a seven days a week, very late in the evening, call, they can have face-to-face instructors in every content area. So this is a very expanded way of us providing tutoring for our students. And then we've had a very successful literacy program this year. Ms. Loison with Elementary Instruction has headed up. Our guest teachers train them very, very well. They have consistent professional development in early literacy, and that has been a successful program. So we're going to go ahead and expand that to math, and we're going to expand it K six. So we will have additional help with early literacy and math. And then, Board, you will have other presentations that will be a little bit more detailed as we move forward with the ASAP plan. You will have division presentations on April twentieth. So you will specifically hear what the strategies are around S E L or how we are embedding S E L. You will hear about family engagement that's happening. Keeping in mind that the ASAP plan is above and beyond, this is above and beyond what we're already doing for our base program. So base program is strong, and we will continue to fortify tier one and to make sure that our teachers are getting professional development and that our our sites, our leaders and staff are getting support for tier one. ASAP is really above and beyond that, some more accelerated experiences for our students. So on the twentieth, you'll get the presentation from different divisions on what they will be doing. And then you will have the final written plan on May eighteenth. And the plan will be comprehensive, and you will have a very deep understanding of everything that's coming, everything that's in place now, everything that's coming in the summer, and then what will be coming for the opening of school next year. Just keeping in mind that the ASAP really addresses the learning or the instructional part of A B eighty-six. Any questions or comments?
Yes, so we will go ahead with the questions because I know the next is a video, right? Correct?
Yes, that's why before I introduced it, I wanted to make sure.
Okay, okay, yes. So Dr. Flores, she has.
I wanted to thank Mrs. Applegate. Your team and you have done tremendous in terms of doing this so quickly and then working also with our S B T A leadership. And I I wanted to commend you all for doing this. And but also, I want to ask you or make a recommendation. Uh, I know in the board correspondence. Uh, I know in the board correspondence, uh, you sent to all of us, I had asked specifically for a breakdown of middle school and high school, English arts and mathematics, right? By cohort, by, by subgroups. And I, 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 I did the analysis uh, for the middle school and the high school for EL kids and RFEP kids. In middle school, excuse me, there are 4,502 students who uh, you know, uh, did not do well uh, with Ds and Fs. For example, uh, they went from, you know, uh, I think it was like double um, the, the Ds and the Fs, if I'm not correct. And then in high school, there's 5,587 ELs and RFEPs together. So total, that's 10,000 kids in both middle school and high school. So I don't see anything right now, uh, this is uh, for the ASAP program. But maybe using the AB 86 uh, money that's will be coming in for next year, we can begin to plan uh, to address, you know, uh, what we're going to do for the middle school and the high school kids. Um, and I noticed that um, I, I check a joint all the time. And I was really pleased to see that there was a secondary um, director for a multilingual department, but then it went down. Uh, it got taken down. That would be the perfect position to deal with uh, starting uh, soon, you know, to start planning for, for next year to address our middle school and our high school ELs. Because they definitely uh, need to be targeted. Uh, you know, 10,000, how, how many ELs do we have? Do we have 23,000, including the RFEPs?
Including the RFEP, approximately 23,000.
About 23,000. So the, and so the rest are in elementary, so I don't even know what you've done for elementary. But uh, I would like to know, I would like to see that data again, you know, I, I, because I don't, I, did you guys present the elementary? I think you did, right?
Yes, I get the, on the, on the um, elementary data.
Right. So we used to have uh, two directors, a director for uh, elementary and a director for um, uh, secondary. So uh, uh, board, I think we should do that again because uh, you know, the, the, the pandemic has really impacted our EL kids. And we need to begin to uh, target them like you're, like you've done uh, Mrs. Applegate and your team has done to, to create programs and, and target that. And how we've done with our African-American students as well. So uh, that's, that's my recommendation uh, um, Madam President and my colleagues.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Flores. And, and hopefully this 20th, April 20th present, a division presentation will probably, you know, can capture or, you know, be able to embed that in there to help us be able to hear the whole story that you plan to present. So, so take note of that. So thank you, Dr. Flores. All right, board, they're going to, as always, give us a, a inside view of what they presented. So uh, Ms. Applegate, we're ready for it.
Thank you very much.
And Dr. Wyatt, we didn't get to peak this time. We reserved ourselves, didn't we? Yeah, we, we decided to wait.
And yes, you will get many more specifics about the instructional side of that from the different departments. So thank you, Dr. Flores, for that. And now we do have our, our um, K-12 PE program that will be showcased. So here is the video. Enjoy.
Oh, hey, you made it. You're finally here. I'm so excited to see you. Well, now that you're here, let's step inside my Google Classroom. I'll show you around. To get us started, on Nearpod, I'm going to open up a collaboration board. Okay? What you're going to do on your own is you're going to type and post an example of an activity that requires good balance. Nice roller skating, that's my wife's favorite. Xavier, what is slackline?
You know how like rope, when, like a ratchet, uh, like a tie-down? The, it's kind of like that kind of rope?
Gotcha.
Uh, I believe it's called a slackline.
Oh, very cool. So very similar to tight roping. That's cool.
Well, after that, we'll move straight into our ed puzzle. Um, our ed puzzle for the day, like I told you yesterday, is going to be on a new non-traditional sport, uh, spike ball.
So it looks like we're going with A. Awesome job, guys. You're correct again. So if you could see in the video, uh, the guy standing on the left side, he's getting ready to serve. So he's going to toss the ball up, you know, spike it down, very similar to volleyball.
There are a lot of outdoor sports or outdoor activities. There are a lot of indoor activities. Which one would you prefer? So I really like to hike. So I put Ms. Kelly hiking. You guys are really good at this, by the way.
We're here live on the breaking news. Here's my favorite locomotor skills. The first one is skipping.
Okay, so one plus two equals, and then do the exercise that matches your answer. Let's see if you are all correct. So let's see if we got it right. One plus two is? Three, yay! Good job, boys and girls. All right, you, good morning, you guys. It is time for another Mindful Monday. We like to make this quick, get in and out because I don't have that much time with you guys. So let's make the most of our 20 minutes. So our card today that I pulled from my mindfulness cards. It says, "All time can be me time." Can you see that? All right. "All time can be me time."
It's important to still do running club because working out makes you feel happy.
Working out makes you feel happy. Good. It gets some of your energy up. And away we go.
Careful, the snow is slippery.
Woo!
Do something you love to do.
If you feel something is unsafe, don't be quiet. Learn to trust in your dog now.
Avoid peer pressure.
Stay safe and healthy because you are important to all of us.
Hey, make the choice with me.
Make the choice with me. You guys are awesome.
From all the SBC USD Physical Education team, we hope you stay active and healthy and hope.
Thank you again. Another great presentation. Yes, clap it up, team. Uh-oh, it's starting to get- Okay, so thank you, thank you again. I just, we are just continuously amazed at all the things that are still happening, um, you know, during distance education and just amazing. This was PE, so we appreciate you all so much for all that you do and incorporating the families. That was great. That was great. All right. Is that it? I don't see any more part of the screen. I think I, I came to the end of it. Is that it? I'm looking at you, Dr. Monar, just shake, okay. Thank you. All right, we will now move to 10.1. Board members, and if you would please, if you, if you would like to make a comment, put it in the chat, um, so I can call upon you. Let's see. I know it's late. I'm not seeing any. But maybe um, you're trying to type. So. Okay. Dr. Hill.
Sure, but I think uh, Dr. Flores was before me.
She, no, she, well-
Oh, that's on something else?
Okay. Yeah, it was prior from the presentation.
All right. I know it's late and I, I won't take one minute. I want to say thanks to uh, Cabinet for your presentation tonight was absolutely wonderful. Did a beautiful job and just appreciate your leadership in working with uh, our staff members. Uh, last night had a chance to attend the uh, boardmanship workshop that was offered by San Bernardino County Schools for Board Members. It was on communication. It was very good, learned a lot. Uh, today had an opportunity during legislative day to um, meet with Senate to uh, Connie Labor. And we're all pushing broadband and the digital divide as uh, 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 one, one of the items. And my last is a request. I, I see a lot of good work going on and I know a lot of people are doing things. I just want to know what you're doing. Is it possible, uh, no rush? I don't care if we don't get it in, in the next uh, month or two, just when you get a chance. I would love to see an organization chart. Uh, because I see people and I, you know, sometimes I say, oh, you guys are doing a good job. But I want to be able to say specifically because that means a lot when you say to someone, I saw the PE presentation, thank you for what, what you're doing. So if we could just get um, an organization chart, as I say, it's no rush, uh, whenever you get around to it. Thank you so much and uh, thank you staff for the great job you're doing. We appreciate all of you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I'll keep it short too. I want to echo Dr. Hill's um, uh, kudos to our staff. Uh, I also want to thank you all for all your BCS. You know, it takes a long time to read, but I real, I think we all really appreciate it so much. It's, it's very, very important uh, to know what's going on and that you respond to our, our requests. I want to share that I participated last week uh, in uh, Dr. Daniel Walker's workshop, Joe Language Workshop uh, for the multilingual uh, department on Brown and Black history. It's one of the first series. It was excellent. I think there, I think there were 60 teachers or maybe 80. I don't know. There were tons of people. And he's dynamic and he's just awful of life and uh, he, his content was so great. Um, and uh, I think that his topics, you know, his historical intertwining of our, of our histories of the, of Latino and Black and, and so forth are really, really uh, key and important. I also participated in the CALSA Superintendent Circle, uh, addressing reopenings of schools. Uh, I was representing CLSBA. We had AXA, we had CTA, we had CSCA there uh, in the, in the room and the panel. It was great. And also the CALSA, um, the, the California uh, Association of Latinos Superintendent and uh, uh, administrators uh, put it together. And uh, it was fabulous because everybody's voice was heard in terms of their, their point or their, their part in the reopening of schools. And uh, so I, I was happy to um, to be there with them. And then uh, I, I noticed that um, the IT management job positions were in ed joint. And I really, Madam President, I really want us to agendize that because we have, if I recall, we have not approved that. And uh, we um, we need worker bees. Uh, not more managers, maybe we need one or two, I don't know. But we need worker bees because of the refreshing of new uh, new uh, devices that are coming to our district. Um, we don't need more managers. We need worker bees in my, in my um, estimation. And then the last thing is uh, thank you um, Mrs. Applegate for the uh, BC uh, board uh, correspondence on Footsteps to Brilliance. I noticed that uh, the data that you showed us for preschool or zero to five was only two months. And so of course, there's not a lot of data uh, there. And I would like us to relook at that because the Clever University is being used by Pomona, Palmdale. And it's for our kids and our families to have access, to have access to the foundational skills and through games uh, in terms of, you know, matching letters and, and sounds. Uh, you know, knowing, getting to know their alphabet, um, and it's through games. And so uh, I would like us to look at the data from Pomona and Palmdale and surrounding schools, uh, districts so that we can take another look at it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And um, again, we, this been, we've been in the middle of ledge week this week. So Dr. Wyatt and all of us have been in and out of meetings. And I just want to add to what Dr. Hill said. So while she spoke with some, we had a chance to speak with um, Ochoa Bo, um, Senator. And we also, then today I had um, Thurston Smith, Assembly Member. So we, we have actually been pushing and leading the way on this broadband really serious. And our letter, Dr. Volkmer into the team applaud you all for that because I'm taking that as a roadshow. And in it also, as we mentioned it today, they were very impressed in how that information. And I know uh, Ms. Christocles, you, you worked on it for a while. And it's been very helpful, a helpful tool for them so that they're just not talking in thin air about wanting to do it. So it's, it's been, you know, this week, we've been on the maps or grateful for that and boardsmanship. All that's been going on this week. But we, we are just happy again that we're leading on something in the serious nature and the numbers and showing them what we have already done to try to close the digital divide. But certainly we need to go beyond that and we do need more money to, to do what we need to do. And um, to Dr. Hill's point, they even talked about, you know, talking to these providers. They got to give a little leeway here, you know, versus just setting the numbers and saying, okay, you guys pay us money to provide these services. So just wanted to add that. And I know, Dr. Volkmer, I'm not going to steal your thunder on um, Ms. Christocles. But Ms. Christocles, you know how we feel. We are, we have been grateful to all that you have done. You have been a, a wonderful part of, of the work that we do. And um, again, I won't steal his thunder, but I will say to be able to have, you know, clean audits and, and with such a large district, that's something that just not to overlook. So I had to sneak it in a little bit and I'll, I'll give him the rest of the thunder. But thank you for all you do and have done and will continue to do. Dr. Volkmer, and no further comments. It's in your hands.
Thank, thank you, President Rogers. Uh, just a couple um, uh, updates, board. I want to uh, recently, the California Department of Education confirmed that San Andreas High School has been recognized as a model continuation high school for school year 2021. A distinction that they'll carry for the next three years. They actually got this designation back in 2017 as well. So we want to congratulate uh, Principal Dory Stratton, her team and the wonderful students of San, San Andreas on these outstanding accomplishments. Um, also want to congratulate, I don't know if she's still on with us or not, but SBTA President Ashley Bidas Alcala for being honored with the California 61st Assembly District 2021 Woman of Distinction Award. Uh, the award will be presented by Assembly Member Jose Medina at the 34th Annual Ceremony, which will be held virtually on March 19th. Board, if you're interested in participating, please make sure to let Karen know and we'll get you hooked into that. Uh, the next regularly scheduled LCAP meeting will be held on Thursday, March 18th. Uh, it's just two evenings from- Uh, it's just two evenings from, is it still today? Yeah, okay. Uh, so just two days from, uh, today on March 18th from 5:30 to 7:00. Uh, this will also be a virtual meeting, but our team has worked very hard to make it very interactive and give people a great opportunity to give us feedback and input. Want to congratulate, uh, uh, Doc Irvin for being appointed as the new Superintendent of San Bernardino City Unified School District. Want to welcome him to the SBC USD family, let him know that we're looking forward, uh, to working with him. Uh, he's joining a, a great team, a wonderful and collaborative board and a, a multi-talented team at every level of the organization. So welcome, uh, Mr. Irvin. Uh, and then finally, uh, on, this is kind of, you know, one of those mixed emotion types of things. We want to congratulate, I guess, Janie Christocles, who, uh, last week announced that she will be retiring at the end of the current school year in June of, uh, 21. And so, uh, as you know, Janie has been, and, um, and we'll talk more before she leaves, before we, uh, before she exits. Uh, just done an amazing job as our, as our CBO and many other functions that she looks over. Uh, and, um, we, we know that, um, uh, she'll miss us and will miss her greatly. Uh, she's done fantastic work and, but she's earned it. She's been at it a long time and, uh, done, uh, great work, not only in our district, but in many other districts and across the state as a state leader and organizational leader. So we want to say congratulations to Janie. Uh, uh, sad, but we know that, uh, you've earned it, so. Those are my comments. Thank you, President Rogers.
Thank you. She won't miss us at 11 o'clock on Tuesday night.
That's true.
Okay, we're now moving on to 11.0 consent items. Yes, board, that means you, you have to respond to me.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Okay. That was a, okay, I heard a second, I heard a, a first and a second. Is there any items?
I'm still awake, okay?
Dr. Flores, when your camera's on, I know you are there for me. Um, is there anything to pull? Anybody? Oh, my good, okay, so I'm going to go ahead and take the vote. If there's no further discussion, Dr. Hill?
I'm still awake, aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. And Mr. Tillman had an emergency, so, um, he, that's why he's not on. Motion carried, thank you. All right. Uh-oh, let me get my computer to move, move on down the road. All right. 12.0 action items, 12.1 Personnel Report Number 15, dated March 16, 2021.
As presented, board, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. If there is no discussion, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. 12.2 Second Period Interim Financial Report as of January 31st, 2021.
So moved. Oops, sorry, go ahead, Margaret, second.
It's been moved in second, thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you. 12.3 Cross Fiscal Year 2020, 2020, 2021 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note Trend Business Services.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. If there's no further discussion, we'll take the vote. Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 12.4 Amendment Number One of the Second World Language Textbook Adoption, 48,007, 44, 43.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. If there's no discussion, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. Moving on, 12.5 Acceptance of the Tempor, of Temporary Amendment to Board Policy 6145 Extracurricular and Curricular Activities First Reading Student Services.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? If not, hearing none, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried. 12.6 Acceptance of Board Policy 0470 COVID-19 Mitigation Plan First Reading.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Dr. Hill?
Aye.
Dr. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Rosales Medina?
Aye.
Dr. Flores?
Aye.
Ms. Sabios?
Aye.
And Gwen Rogers, aye. Motion carried, thank you so much. We are now at 13.0 Summary of Board Members Requests. And I believe, Ms. Ontiveras, you are up.
Thank you very much, President Rogers. Um, I also want to extend, uh, a warm welcome to, um, Mr. Doc Irvin as our new, uh, Superintendent. Um, we're looking forward to, uh, working with him as well. So, um, I captured, uh, seven, uh, questions from you tonight. So first, uh, came from Dr. Barbara Flores, who asked if we would consider using the AB eighty-six funds to pay, grow our own students as para, para professionals, possibly to support the ASAP plan. Mr. Danny Tillman then inquired about the timing of the availability of additional funds and encouraged engaging everyone in the conversation about how to spend these dollars, especially to support the needs of students who have experienced learning loss. Dr. Barbara Flores recommended considering planning for specific ways to help middle and high school students who are currently earning Ds and Fs. Dr. Flores recommended adding, um, both a Director of Elementary and a Director of Secondary for the multilingual programs. Dr. Margaret Hill, um, asked if we would share an organizational chart. And I also want to acknowledge that, um, we are nearly done with that at the request of Board Member Myra Sabio, Sabios, who asked for that. We've had, um, some leaves in the Communication Office that have slowed that pros, that project just a little bit. So we're, uh, should be done with that very shortly and be able to respond to both of you at that time, so. Um, and then, uh, Dr. Barbara Flores, um, asked if we would, um, add a discussion about the IT manager's job to the board agenda. Uh, Dr. Barbara Flores also asked if we would, uh, review data from surrounding districts to consider looking at the zero to five, uh, program for Footsteps to Brilliance. And those were the requests that I captured this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ontiveras. All right, uh, Dr. Flores, I see your hand.
Uh, just a, a clarification or a, a sma, a minor edit, um, Ms. Ontiveras. It would be for the Clever University.
Okay.
Zero to five, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, board, we are now at that moment. So move.
Second.
Second, yeah.
It, it, meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you so much. We made it before Wednesday, so we did good, uh, to a point. All right, thank you all. We want to thank all our, um, viewing audience, we appreciate you as well. Thank you again, God bless and good night.
Good night, all.
Everybody.